Yeah.
I have had those.
I like pumpkin seeds. Those get kinda chewy.
Yep.
I think it's the corn nuts, but it goes there.
Go down to my office, just in case Michelle walks.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
She called in different directions.
Oh, you did talk with her already today?
Yes.
Okay. Originally, yeah, okay, that was some of the snow days that I talked about. Okay.
Corn nuts.
Alright. Yeah, peanut seeds and pistachios. I'm gonna say that.
Cause I like them.
Okay. Growing up, we'd go out to Canada, break out, take a wagon. There's peanuts around, and then we'd grab pistachios, and we'd just sit around with the campfire, just chuck shells into the fire, and pop every once in a while. So much peanut butter and peanuts that it's crazy, you know, where'd you get peanut butter?
It's the tourists in his room, but he's not.
Hi there.
Hello.
Good morning.
That's Donna, you can just sit down right here.
They perceive each other on the phone.
Yes. Alright. And then Tammy Eaton is our auditor.
Hi.
Michelle Moon, Kyle Stecker's chair.
Nice to meet you.
We have Josh Whacter.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you first.
Carter will be here in about fifteen minutes.
Good to meet you, kid.
Nice to meet you.
And these are some deputies, or excuse me, department heads, that are here to listen.
Okay, perfect. You're okay, we've kind of set, cause we can't see up around that hole.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'll set one here for her.
Okay.
I've been waiting for him.
Uh, no, you can start, but he should be here.
Would you leave one more? Jack Claph is not here, he's a board member.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, and then I think Donna, do you give Donna a copy please? Thank you.
Absolutely. There you go.
So I can listen to you and...
That's fine.
Alright, Michelle, I'll let you start wherever you'd like to here.
I made it, I was doing my duties.
Yes, I know, you were, you were, you were doing a good job.
They're coming up here, guys, so.
Okay.
Perfect. Michelle, feel free, anywhere you'd like to start, we can go wherever.
Okay, well, I thought what we would do, since we've already discussed some of the other alternatives, is go through the alts that I brought today. These are some thoughts and ideas that not only I had, but Kyle and I had talked about. You and I had talked about Doug's. So, you know, that's kind of where we're at, and that's how these all came to fruition. I think all of you probably know the background, but just making sure.
Yep.
And thank you for inviting me today, cause it's much easier to see all of you than be on the phone, and, cause I could not hear you guys. It was really hard the other day, so I apologize for that.
Yeah, if, if we had to do it again, we could have done it through the owl or something, and, and then it would have been a lot better technology-wise, but yeah, it was, it was...
It's okay, we made it work, and here I am, so we're good.
Yep.
So, like last time, I spreadsheeted the alternates, put them on a two-page. The rest of the information that you have in here are the actual rate sheets, and then the documents that we call OBS documents. Those are how the plans are actually programmed into our system. So those will give you details on the plans, cause the rate sheets don't give you all of those. But the group quote summary is actually a high-level comparison, and it makes it easier to compare than flipping through a bunch of rate sheets. So you're familiar with this, I did this last time on the group alts that we live at.
Yep.
So as always, I left your current plan there. That is, has a thirty-five thousand dollar stop loss. Five hundred dollars deductible, one thousand dollar family. So again, nothing has changed from your current plan. It does have the current suggested funding for expected claims and fees, and then max liability. Then we took your current plan, and we said, okay, we have a seventy-five thousand dollar individual stop loss. So that's the only thing that we changed, is changing from a thirty-five thousand dollar stop loss to a seventy-five thousand dollar stop loss. If you just look at the estimated suggested rates, that will save you an estimated eight hundred thousand dollars a year. Really what that comes down to are in your fixed fees. There's a little, some additional liability, obviously, in claims, but a lot of that is in fixed fees. If you go down, or on the second page, second column over, under the title where it says monthly. If you look at the individual stop loss fee, instead of being the one thousand eighty-one that you pay now, it's five hundred and twenty-four dollars. It's almost, well, it's half of what you pay now. So going from just a thirty-five thousand dollar stop loss to a seventy-five thousand dollar stop loss, which in our fully insured book of business is where we will get kind of that... It's not a defined stop loss, but that's where we take and we give groups credit for over that amount, so that they could, you know, they get, that's their pooling point.
So, how do you figure the five hundred and twenty-four dollars, is that per three hundred and thirty people that we have insured, or is that per plan?
Per contract.
Per contract.
So that'd be, that'd be per employee plan?
Per employee.
Per employee contract or family contract, not per each member. So it's not per belly button, it's per contract.
Per contract.
Is really the easiest way I always look at it. It's not, yeah.
Yep.
Does that make sense? And that's an actuarial figure. I don't know how the five twenty-four is calculated, it's an actuarial number. I mean, as far as that per contract per month. But that's the difference in having a thirty-five thousand dollar individual stop loss versus a seventy-five thousand dollar stop loss.
It's our liability versus your liability.
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely. So with a seventy-five thousand dollar stop loss, you're gonna see consistent across the board, it's always gonna be the five twenty-four thirty-nine. So it doesn't matter what plan design changes, that number is going to remain the same if you have a seventy-five thousand dollar stop loss. Just like if you remain at a thirty-five thousand dollar individual stop loss, that number is going to remain the same. Because that is, like Kyle said, just the additional liability that you are taking on versus Walmart taking on. And that's that difference in that fee.
So the only thing that don't make sense to me is if you have a family plan or a single plan, how's the stop loss different?
It's per person for the stop loss.
Yep.
But the fee is per contract.
Makes sense, but why would it be that? I don't correlate that as being the same, then.
Because actuarially, they've come up with numbers to say, based on this population, based on this many family, this many single contracts, here's our liability, here's what it costs.
Okay.
Is that that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, that's all in the underwriting process.
Right.
Exactly.
It's part of insurance, it don't have to make sense.
Yeah, unfortunately.
That's just where the actuaries sit down and calculate what our additional liability is, you know, or in this case, less liability.
Projections.
Versus yours. Yep, yep, absolutely.
And then I noticed the difference between, so you get the difference between the seventy-five thousand versus thirty-five thousand, but then I noticed you got the fifty thousand stop loss is the same individual stop loss as, as if there was thirty-five thousand. Is there a reason for that?
Like, the fifth...
Yeah, I see what you mean, actually, that was supposed to be fifty, and they didn't quote it, it's actually thirty-five.
Okay.
So when you're looking at the pound signs and it says fifty, individual stop loss, that should actually be thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Yes.
Okay.
Good catch, I forgot to take that out. They were going to forty-fifty, and then they just left it, so you could just do an easier comparison.
Sure.
Okay, so if you look at then, any more questions on that before I move on? Okay. So if we look at the five thousand, ten thousand dollar deductible, and out-of-pocket max, so those would be the same. So right now, you have a five hundred, one thousand, so this would be a five thousand, ten thousand. With Prudin RX, which we talked about last time.
Yep.
And seventy-five thousand individual stop loss. So those would be those changes. It gets you down to just under, or, you know, right at the two point five million dollars, which is saving you one point four million dollars each year in estimated costs. And I believe that's about where you are today. I didn't bring today's rates, does she have those?
No.
And then you sent them to me. Cause I was trying to come up with, you know, where can we get, just to show you what it would take to keep your rates consistent.
Which that does not factor in the extra claims cost, right?
You mean that we stay out of the...
Yeah, that difference... No, it does. It, the difference from thirty-five to seventy-five, that extra claims cost is not figured in those numbers, right?
That's figured in the annual cost.
That's figured in the annual cost?
Yes. So what it does is it takes the additional liability and figures it into the annual cost.
Okay, so the under, under the monthly column, that fifth line, that nine thirty-four, zero three five would be what we would expect to pay with seventy-five thousand dollar stop loss?
For claims.
For claims?
Stop loss. No, that's your...
I didn't, I didn't think claims were figured in there.
Yeah, expected claims, one million six hundred twenty-six thousand.
Claims and, yeah, so this is just your fees, the nine hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Yep.
The two point five million adds in your claims.
Expected claims, okay, okay.
Yes.
That two point five is...
So, would it be possible to get copies of what you guys are looking at? Cause we're all in the dark here. Have any idea what you're talking about? Everybody's kind of wondering what we're talking about.
Typically, we, and I don't...
I guess I'm just saying, we don't, we can't really follow that here.
Do you have, do you have one extra packet that someone could make copies of? Or are they all handed out right now?
They're all handed out.
I can make a copy of mine, it has some writing on it, just in case you guys are mind-blown.
Donna, do you have yours clean?
Here, I already got mine unstapled, so I can use it.
Okay, how many copies do we need? Two, four, six, eight, nine, ten?
Can you make ten? Or, you can couple extra down, but I don't want them like...
Okay, so we'll, we'll work on that while we continue the discussion here.
Okay. I'm sorry, Doug, do you...
Well, we are talking about the column, five thousand, ten thousand deductible, and five thousand, it'd be the same out-of-pocket max. Prudit for pharmacy, and seventy-five thousand stop loss, right? Third...
Yes.
Third column from the left.
Yep.
And if you go to your estimated suggested rates, annual cost of two million five hundred sixty thousand three hundred sixty, that is the expected claims plus the administrative cost, is it not?
Yes.
But...
It is.
Thank you.
You're correct.
Hello.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So then if we look at keeping the individual stop loss at thirty-five thousand, so what we just talked about at seventy-five thousand, but taking it to thirty-five thousand...
Do you, do you want me to have you on the phone, so you could listen?
Claim, that's the first column, oh.
It's up to you, it's up...
So that estimated cost is three point three six eight million dollars. So that would be, you know, approximately a four hundred thousand dollar savings over today. And again, this is if claims, you know, are what we project. It could be a little less, it could be a little more, this is what we're projecting. Then if you go to the column that has the pound signs above...
That would be the third from the right.
Right.
From the right, yes.
Yep.
This is a point-of-service plan. So right now, you have our Alliance Select PPO plan. That gives you access to all the doctors in our network. The point-of-service network is a little narrower network. However, you still have out-of-network coverage. So out-of-network being out of the, what we call the WIPPI network, and that's the point-of-service network. If you go to something like an HMO, you have just the WIPPI network of doctors, and you do not have any coverage out-of-network. So you're gonna have in-network coverage and out-of-network coverage. Out-of-network coverage is going to cost you a little bit more, because the out-of-network deductible and OPM are required to be additional cost versus in-network. So if they, if someone chose to go out-of-network, they would have a two thousand, five thousand in-network, and they would have a five thousand, ten thousand out-of-pocket max if they choose to go out-of-network. I am running right now, and I don't have the numbers back, a disruption report to see if there are any claims that were incurred this past year out-of-network. So out of the WIPPI network. If there were claims incurred, we'll know what they are, we'll know how many people are impacted. Right now, I think it's gonna be very small, but I don't know that for sure, so that's something I can share with you. So again, those people would still have coverage, it would just be considered out-of-network coverage, because it would be out of the WIPPI network versus the overall PPO network. We know that your employees are using the PPO network at a hundred percent. We need to find out if that, just, it's just a little narrower network, because it has deeper discounts, which is why it saves you additional money if any of those claims are outside of that WIPPI network. That I will, I should have yet this week, I just don't have it yet.
What, what classifieds that network?
It's our contracts with our providers and hospitals.
So nothing to do with anything close or interstate or just whoever?
Yep, our contracted providers and hospitals. Yep, has nothing to do with...
Is our list of those providers, or how do we know who those providers may or may not be?
Um, yes, to answer your question, there, what people would need to do is you could go on and find, you know, is my provider part of the point-of-service network? But what's, that's why I'm running...
Bring along Andrew, doctor.
To see how to...
What, you're gonna get Andrew up for what?
What about Mayo?
Mayo is not part of the WIPPI network, but it's still out-of-network coverage.
We got a quick tour going, coming through here. You said Mayo is not part of it?
It's not part of the WIPPI network, it would be considered out-of-network. That's what kind of see how many claims...
We, we might have some.
Great, and that's my, it's just, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yep. That's, okay.
I figured it was worth a look.
Roger, feel free.
We apologize for the interruption, this is our leadership group that's turned the card house today, and we wanted to see county government in action. So this is our board supervisor room, and there's a lot of department heads and other people here right now to discuss about it, I'm assuming you're talking about insurance?
Health insurance, yep.
Health insurance today. So we're just gonna sit and listen in for five, ten minutes, unless you guys wanna introduce yourselves quick, that'd be great.
Tammy, you wanna start?
I'm Tammy Eaton, Cassius County Auditor, and also the clerk to the Board of Supervisors.
Kyle Stecker, fourth district supervisor, the north end of the county, also the chairman right now. Mando is a classmate of mine.
Josh Whacter, third district, kind of handled the east half of Algonah, and a little bit of areas south of Algonah.
I'm Roger Jarks, fifth district supervisor, and I have the middle part of the county, just basically.
Absent today is Jack Claph, I'm not gonna feel sorry for him, cause he's down somewhere in more, I don't know where it is, Caribbean or something.
Seven Mai ties.
Yeah.
And then Carter Gaff, this district what?
Carter is District One, the south end of the county, he's listening on the phone, but has some... Yep, there he is, he's...
And Doug, if you would turn around and wave, we just toured your office, did a very good job, Thomas, our engineer, Doug, Doug Miller, and you've already met Todd Holmes. We're gonna meet some of your guys' offices here later, so we'll introduce you then. Thank you, we're just gonna listen for a little bit, then we'll move out.
Thanks, Roger. Alright, Michelle, do you know where you left off there?
We're good, luckily.
Perfect.
Not my first time...
And do you know how soon you'll have that report for the disruption?
Should have by the end of the weekend.
Okay, yeah.
As soon as I have it, I will distribute it after all of it.
Is it just the third, or the last column, that has that, or is it the last, last three?
The last three columns.
Okay. Okay.
Like, I just wanted you to see, you know, implementing that network, what that would do.
Yep.
Cause again, it doesn't count Mayo out, it just makes it out-of-network, so it's still covered. It's not like if you went to an HMO network, where that would count Mayo out, you wouldn't have any coverage if you went to Mayo.
I...
It'd just be under slightly different rate, is basically what you're saying, if you had to go to Mayo.
Just a different out-of-pocket.
Yeah, deductible and out-of-pocket, so you're still gonna have coverage, it's just going to be, yeah, different coverage.
Okay.
So I, I, I thought, you know what, we're, we're looking at different things, let's look at that, let's consider...
Knowing, just knowing how close we are to the Minnesota border, I think you might find some there, so we'll, we'll look at that.
Right, and I figured I probably would, yeah, but it's, I figured it's just worth a look.
You're not moving an needle on extreme amount, like we know, you know, really it's not worth it.
No, not if it's a huge disruption, it's not, I would agree.
Yeah, it's just not worth it.
Yeah.
The only thing that moves the needle is changing from thirty-five to seventy-five thousand.
And the deductible change.
Yeah.
That makes, that makes almost a million and a half dollar difference.
Right, but how do you make up for the higher deductible costs?
And we're back at the discussion of the deductible reimbursement.
Right, is that worth it?
Well, if you, if you implement that, then you include staff costs, and that was one of the questions, I don't know if I asked, Michelle. If we did some sort of a deductible reimbursement, is there, is that something Walmart could administer as far as what claims qualify towards that, or what doesn't? Or is that something we'd have to do in-house?
We don't administer that. That you would need to find probably a TPA to do, or...
What's a TPA?
Third-party administrator.
Okay.
So you'd probably have to find someone to do that. What we can do is we can send EOBs to that third party, so they know, oh, you know, this person should only have a thousand dollar deductible, so we're gonna reimburse to them anything above that. Now, keep in mind, you're still taking on all of that liability for those claims.
Yep.
So, yes, it's going to move this needle, but it's not gonna help your claim situation.
Our fund balance in the end is gonna be the same, probably.
Exactly, exactly, by doing that, that's what you do.
Yep.
You just put dollars in this bucket instead of in this bucket.
And then you have to hire somebody to administer it and talk about it.
Right, and pay those fees, and I, I don't know what those fees are, but...
You'd have to be very familiar with insurance, isn't it, to be able to do it?
I mean, there are people that do that, there are companies that do that for a living, and I mean, I could find some in this area for you. Like I said, I don't know the cost, but yeah, you're gonna incur that additional cost too. Yeah, it's just not something we do.
Yep.
Because it's not truly insurance.
So in the end, you have that all figured in your rates?
Oh, we don't care which, we don't know what you're doing.
You really don't care which one we do, because you got it figured in your rates anyhow.
Right, we don't, we don't know what you're doing, we don't, you know, if we send third-party EOBs, that's fine, we don't even know where you're insuring to. And that's, that's really up to you guys, but I'm just gonna give you a heads up, it's kind of defeats what you're trying to do.
Yeah.
I'm not telling you not to do it, I'm telling you it does have a counteract effect.
The stop-loss change would impact the liability we have as our health insurance fund versus what Walmart takes on. And the difference in the deductible, that would impact what an employee pays versus what the, the health insurance fund would pay, correct?
Correct. Yes.
So those are comparisons, side by side there, I guess?
Right. Now, the other option is implementing an additional plan. So looking at, um, I don't know, I'm just gonna throw this out. You raise the deductibles in the plan you have today, maybe you don't raise them thirty to ten thousand, but you raise them, right? Then you also add this point-of-service plan. So the members have, so your employees have the option of which plan they want. Maybe you make the rates for the point-of-service plan less, because that's going to save the county money. But for people that say, you know what, I have to have Mayo in-network, then you keep the PPO plan. But people pay a little bit more out of their pocket to go to the PPO plan and have access to all the providers as in, in-network. And then you have a point-of-service plan also as an option. Your group's big enough, you could offer two plans.
How much savings is there?
These are the rates.
These are the rates?
Yep, and so there's no way for me to really predict who's gonna take which plan, and it's probably going to depend on how you start to your rates to your, to the employees.
There would be no benefit. The individual would have to pay part of their premium then, in order to have enticement for them to do it.
Yep, yeah.
I mean, I, I don't...
Well, if we offer a full medical family plan at no cost, why would they choose something cheaper?
Right, and maybe you do that for the point-of-service plan, and then if people wanna buy up, so to speak, to the PPO plan, they have to pay something.
Oh.
I don't know, do you pay the hundred percent of the premium now?
Currently, we do.
Yes.
Okay, so that would be a thought, you know, offer the point-of-service plan, and again, I'm just throwing out thoughts and ideas for you guys, because you do have options.
Wouldn't, wouldn't everybody that has potential to have a history of meeting their deductible, they would choose the full plan either way? Wouldn't it spike your numbers some, because the people would know which plan to take, a lot of them?
No, not necessarily.
What the additional costs would be? Right.
Yeah, I mean, you would have to determine.
I mean, there's contributions to our fund.
Yeah.
They determine the contributions to the fund, and if we're gonna have another plan above and beyond what we're offering, then somebody's gonna have to pay for that.
Right.
And we would have to determine what the additional cost would be based on what you suggested, and what the maximum liability.
Um, I almost, looking at them now, I almost wish we had, like, the, the last column has, um, that has seventy-five thousand dollar stop-loss, but for the ones that are in-network, it's two and five for the deductibles, and then out is five and 10, where if you compared that to the third column, you'd have five and 10, and there, that's all in-network and out-of-network is the same. So if, if you tried to compare those, those would be the two lowest costs as totals, but they're not quite apples to apples, would that be, I mean, because your, your in-network deductible would be, would be lower. The third and the last one, on the right.
Okay, so the five and 10 deductible with the seventy-five thousand individual stop-loss.
Yep.
And the one far to the right?
Yep, because your in-network, out-of-pocket maximum is two and five versus five and 10. I wonder how much of an impact that would make.
If you made which change?
If the ru, far, if the last one went to five and 10 for a deductible in-network.
Um, if it did, I mean, your out-of-network deductible would have to be higher.
It would go, it would go a lot.
Like seventy-five hundred, ten thousand.
Yeah, it would, it would go higher, but if, if people were wanting to use those providers, they would probably be on the in-network, on the, on the third column, so to speak, if we had two plan options, right? I mean, you would choose that anyway, because it'd be the lower deductible. If you were concerned about deductible costs.
Right, yeah, I mean, and again, it's, to me, like, when I choose a healthcare plan, I choose based on my providers, not my deductible, I just, that's how I choose. So, I've been in a situation before where I've paid more as an employee, and I made that choice to have the PPO plan, okay? There are people out there that it's not important to them, maybe they don't have established providers, maybe they just wanna be able to provide insurance for their young family, and again, by having a point-of-service plan, you have in-network providers, but you also have access to that out-of-network coverage, so what if their child gets sent, you know, what if their child's very ill and they get sent to, I don't know, some children's hospital somewhere? They still have coverage.
Yeah.
Um, so they're not, you know, I, I mean, not able to go there because they don't have coverage, they still have that option, but they have a more affordable plan where they pay out of their paycheck every week, or every two, I don't know how often you get paid, but figuratively speaking, so they pay out of their checkbook, and it ta, and it takes less for them to have good insurance than if they have that PPO coverage where maybe that's more important to me.
Well, I think catastrophic insurance, or health costs, that's why we have insurance, is to cover things like that.
Yeah.
Not to cover the five hundred and thousands.
And we got away from that in the nineties, when HMOs came into fruition, we got away from that, because we went to copays, and everyone was like, well, it just cost me ten dollars to go to the doctor.
Yeah.
That's not why we have insurance, we have insurance, exactly what you said, for catastrophic means, and because of healthcare costs, and because of inflation in healthcare right now and prescription drugs, that's where we're going, that's where I see so many organizations and companies and counties and cities going, um, whether they still have, you know, maybe it's still no cost to their members, or maybe it's a small cost that you implement, but you've, you know, you have to find a way to fix that healthcare plan.
Right.
Luke, you got a question?
At what point do HSAs kick in? You know, or when you're talking out-of-pocket maximum, you know, seventy-five hundred and ten, where can HSAs be incorporated into that?
Anywhere, I mean, you can implement an HSA at any time.
Is there a dollar limit to what's contributed to that?
There are limits, um, I don't have the HSA limits with me, but there are limits. You know, and that's also something where, you know, someone takes a higher deductible health plan, maybe that's part of what you contribute, instead of paying a TPA to administer those claims, maybe the county contributes, you know, a couple hundred dollars a year, or five hundred dollars a year, or whatever, to that, to someone who takes that higher deductible plan, implements an HSA.
But then they have to expend by the end of the year.
Yes.
There's, there's restrictions on what you can carry over on.
What, what?
Yeah.
It's an HSA, it's a state.
HSA carry on indefinitely.
Right, yes, I'm sorry, I missed what, yes, on an HMA, HSA, yes, you can carry on, yes.
But if the county puts money in, does it have to be spent before the end of the year?
No.
It does, it can carry over.
Yeah, not on the health savings account.
Luke?
So I had one through my previous employer, um, we had the opportunity to pick either a pain plan or a high deductible plan, you know, with an HSA, the employer would contribute into the HSA, so. Um, I've been gone from there nine years, just last year, I finished spending that HSA money on braces. So, but you're able to carry it indefinitely, I believe, as long as it's used.
Yes, but that's one side with a high deductible health plan.
It did.
This is not a high deductible health plan, although it has high deductible, it is not a high deductible health plan.
Okay, so there's a difference still, okay.
Yes, yes.
So what would, go ahead, Doug.
What would be a high deductible health plan?
That's what I was gonna ask too.
A high deductible health plan does not have any first dollar coverage except for preventative care. So, let's say, actually, I'm on a high deductible health plan right now, and I have an HSA plan for that reason, I'm banking that I'm not gonna have any claims that I have to tap into, so I'm hoping to save that for when I go into retirement, I can use that to pay my medical premiums. So when I go to the doctor, um, I have, I don't know, my leg hurts, my knee hurts, I'm old, my knee hurts. I go in, I get x-rays, um, I have an office visit, by the end of it, it's three hundred and fifty dollars. I pay that entire three hundred and fifty dollars. My deductible on my high deductible health plan is four thousand dollars, so I pay the first four thousand dollars, end of story. Now, if I go in for a physical, if I go in for a mammogram, if I go in for a colonoscopy, all of that is paid at a hundred percent sick. But, any other claims are not until I hit my four thousand dollars. Once I hit that, everything is paid at a hundred percent, so it's still preventing, preventing catastrophic claims.
But you have your HSA to cover those first dollars.
Right, so I can dig out of that HSA if I need to.
Okay.
I try not to, cause I'm trying to save it.
Cool, yep.
But yes, I mean.
But it's personal, personal choice in that regard.
Absolutely, I mean, a little over a year ago, in December, my husband had a heart attack. We had to come up with four thousand dollars then, well, guess what? The results of the heart attack didn't stop in January of the next year, when our deductible started over at four thousand dollars. So, sometimes you have to dig into it, but a lot of people try to save it, and like you said, you just use the rest of it. Um, or you can keep it in there, it'll stay in the account, it earns interest, you can just set it up probably with one of your banks around here, a lot of banks administer HSAs, I don't know if you have a local bank that would do that?
I'm pretty sure Northwest Fair. It's not Northwest Fair, it's Northwest Fair.
Okay. So now, an HSA, a high deductible health plan, an HEHP plan, is not anything that I quoted here, but even though we have high deductibles, and that's what gets confusing.
What kind of an impact do you typically see that making to rates? Like, I mean, we've got higher dollars, like you're saying, for high deductibles, but to go to a high deductible plan, what does that change the rates, even if we kept the actual dollars for deductible the same? If we went to a high deductible plan, what kind of impact does that make?
They're probably going to be very similar.
Close, at least?
Yeah, close to, like, the five-ten deductible and OPM, that third one from the left.
Yep, but that would give people, if, if there was a HSA contribution or something, that would give people flexibility, possibly?
Yes, but what it's gonna do is like, it's gonna take away these copay tiers on your prescription drugs, cause again, there's no first dollar coverage, except for, you know, preventive care.
Okay.
We're still not moving the needle a long ways.
Well, that, that third column moves it a long ways.
The third column.
The third column does, it'll be raised to seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, third and the last one moves it quite a ways.
But then, the county's gonna, the county's fund is gonna go down, because you're paying more of the insurance on seventy-five thousand.
What do you, what do you mean?
It depends on how.
How the claims.
How many people under seventy-five thousand dollar stop-loss. I just went by last year.
Cost, there you go. But that is figured into this dollar amount, into this two-point-five-six million dollars.
Yep.
In the third column, that additional claim liability is figured in there, so. You don't need to add anything additional into those numbers, that's all taken into account.
So on that topic, I mean, I was a little confused in that in the beginning, because you got about a million dollar difference between the first column and the third for annual costs, which has the stop-loss and, and all those fees figured in.
Mm-hmm.
But then when you get down to claims, it's a one-point-four million dollar difference. So, if we spend less on stop-loss.
Okay, what do you mean, we, we adapt to claims?
That's the total annual cost, it's not just the claims, so there's administration and claims.
It's added together, claims isn't a separate number on here, it's, it's what they've added in for.
Right, it's already added in there.
Yeah.
So, the, on the estimated suggested rates for the annual costs, the two-point-five-six million dollars is what we're saying we estimate your fixed fees and claims liability to be in 2024. If you go down, that's the estimated max liability, so that would be, if you would hit your aggregate of a hundred and twenty-five percent of claims, because that's where your ag insurance is.
Yeah.
We're estimating that liability to be, you know, the two-point-nine-six-six million dollars. So really, most people focus on that, the estimated suggested rates and fees. Some people choose to fund and to price their rates to their employees at the estimated max liability, so that they don't run their fund short.
Would you please repeat that statement?
It's a choice to run either the estimated suggested rates, or to fund at the estimated max liability to protect the fund from running short, should you have an excessive.
So you're saying using the hundred-and-twenty-five percent figure as a max of what's needed?
Some, some people, some funds use that as their target.
Okay.
For a contribution to.
For contribution from employees, that's where they set their rates to protect their fund.
Okay.
If they run below that, then the next year, you know, maybe they cut back a little bit and don't fund that.
So we would be over that, one-twenty-five percent rate, pretty?
Not right now.
No. We're not even close, and that's a whole different discussion.
Yeah.
Pretty sure.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, but is column AX on your sheet, it says auditor's balance as percent of max liability? Is that the percent of the one-twenty-five?
If you look at column T and column U, that is your expected claims and expected liability, and if you look at column J and column M, those are which, what do you, uh, well, I mean, you gotta look at, if you don't break down.
I, well, that's why I asked.
Well.
That's why I asked about column AX, which is on the backside there, that's auditor's balance as percent of max liability.
That's the auditor's balance as a percent, that has nothing to do with contributions.
I didn't say contributions, I said max liability.
What she just said was some funds choose to have their contributions the same as the hundred per, hundred-and-twenty-five percent liability. The auditor's balance has nothing to do with contributions.
The auditor's balance is a byproduct of the contributions?
Correct, but it has nothing to do with, it ends up what the expenses are. It is a byproduct, exactly, everything is a byproduct, but it, it's not, you cannot say that contributions.
I, I think you missed my point, but that's fine.
Well, I'll tell you that your contributions are not near, they, they're more around last year, seventy-five percent and sixty-six percent of what was left.
So did I understand her correctly, the, the high deductible, uh, plan that she was talking about there, or that she's on, and referenced the four thousand dollar deductible? Did she say that it would come in roughly at that column three figure, two-point-nine?
Similar.
Similar, I mean, that would be similar.
Yep.
And we're currently at four-point-four, and some change, I mean, okay? Is it possible, if, because you suggested the two-plan approach, can you do a plan where, you know, the current plan or something similar to that would be a plan where the employees would have to contribute, and then offer a high deductible plan with the health savings account? Is that a possibility? So that, and that would be paid for, and the savings of one-point-five mil, or whatever that would come in? Um, I mean, would that make sense?
The, I, that would be a decision we would have to make.
I understand that, I'm just trying to get numbers out there, because obviously, we're here trying to save money. And I, I applaud that, my, my question is, you know, instead of the PPO, and I don't really understand all of that, I understand that, you know, the HMO and the different networks, I know that, but I don't, you know, the acronyms, much the same as lawyers, we have acronyms for things.
I was gonna say, yeah, not, not your job.
But anyway, um, so in that situation, for those who want to, uh, have employees who, who look at it from the standpoint of, okay, in the last five years, I haven't really had any major medical, I'm not saying I'm not going to tomorrow die of a heart attack, but you know, the, the reality is, you know, the preventative stuff is what, what I do, you know, and looking at it from my family's standpoint, and if those are things that, uh, And if those are things that, um, uh, I value, and I look at, say, well, there's health insurance then that the county would provide, and it would save the county money. Um, you know, offer that. But for those who say, you know, I really am kind of thinking I might need to have something major, contribute two to four hundred dollars for the family plan to, to save the county that way. Um, but it'd be a choice as opposed to a force. Is that a possibility?
Yes.
Yeah, and that was, that was a lot of the conversation me and Michelle had on the phone was could we offer two plans and multiple options? And we went into other stuff with tiers as far as, I think you said it was tiers, um, like you could have options for single plan, you could have single independence, single and, or employee and spouse, and full family plan. So there's brackets within the plans that could also be options. So it'd be more employee choice in that regard.
And all of those could be offered. I mean, you don't have to necessarily have just two plans. You could have all of those.
Well.
Is that possible?
It's still two plans.
Right, okay, but it's just.
It's just, right now, you have two tiers. You have employee and family. So you could have two plans, and you could have employee, employee spouse, employee children, family, this plan. Employee only, employee spouse, employee children, family.
And not too long ago, I saw, you know, a, uh, an offer by an employer, um, and there was just, I was reading, there's so many different options available, but it's still that two-plan, but different options you would have available. I think looking at it from the standpoint of trying to fit the entire county employee group into this and this, take it or leave it, is gonna be very difficult, because there's so many different, uh, employees out there that.
Everyone has their own situation.
We all have our own situation. And so I, I, as long as that's available, I think there's a tremendous way to put the mind together to, to try and save money on, on insurance. But yet making it an option and not a forced bill.
See, and that's, and that's where, when Michelle said there, there'd still be two plans, but like, for you or me as an employee, you'd have eight options to choose from.
Right.
There are two plans for Walmart, but there are eight choices for us hypothetically.
Right, and either one would save the county money, whatever choice they make. I mean, whether they wanna pitch in and, and pay for, you know, the, I'd say the Cadillac, or if they want to say, you know, I'm at that point in my life where I don't think that I'm going, I need protection. I'm willing to put into a health savings account in order to, you know, provide that in case something major happens. But, you know, I'm relatively healthy and, and I, I, uh, you know, I don't think I'm gonna need that and, and, or could make that up in other ways, so. You know, that, that's what I'm hearing, and as long as it's, you know, going to be able to save and still keep the fund balance healthy, which I think is a major concern and should be. Um, you know, I'm glad to hear that. That's not my choice. I'm just.
To me, I think that's the main thing we're trying to target, right, is to keep that fund balance happy. Now, I do want to, um, I don't, I don't real, I don't remember if we talked about this in our last conversation or when I was on the phone. But any, right now, you guys have a grandfathered plan. So when the federal government comes in and they say, you have to follow A C A guidelines, you have to follow this, you don't, you're not required to as a grandfathered plan. However, any changes we make to this plan throws you out of grandfathered status, which is not a bad thing.
Yeah, I don't roll with that, you know, what?
It just, right now, you're subject to A C A requirements, which means you have to cover preventive care, which you do already. It, it would be very, very minor changes.
Could we, could we keep the current plan plus adding an additional, like the last column, as a second plan and keep the grandfathered status for the first?
Yes, but I don't recommend doing that, because then you have different things that are covered in different plans. They're covered different.
Okay.
I don't recommend doing that, because it's a lot of confusion for employees. You can do it. I'm not saying you can't.
Okay.
I just don't recommend it.
Would, would like the third and last one be the ones that would line up the best? Because they'd have the same stop loss, they'd have.
You have to have the same stop loss
Okay.
on both your plans. That's required. You have to have the same stop loss. So what you do with the other two plans is completely up to you. If you want to do your P P O plan, so like the network you have today.
The other ones.
If you wanna do that with, and raise those deductibles.
The other ones at thirty-five thousand don't make enough of a difference?
And then do the same seventy-five thousand, have lower deductibles in your, um, point of service plan? You could do that. That's really up to you guys. If you want, to use your reference, if you want a Cadillac plan, and then you want, you know, or if you want, I wouldn't recommend probably using the same deductibles for both plans, because then the only thing you're giving up is network.
Yeah, probably not. You'd, you'd want a low deductible, but a monthly contribution, or high deductible and probably little to no monthly contribution, because that was, and that, that was some of the conversation I guess we had last week or whatever in here was, some people would rather have a higher deductible than a dollar out of their check or dollars out of their check every paycheck. And, and some might go both ways. You might have some either way.
So maybe you have your high deductible health plan as your P P O plan. So as the same network you have today, but change your deductibles to the higher deductible. So if someone wants to take advantage of, you know, having that out-of-network benefit paid, you know, or everything's just, you know, we're, we're Mayo, which has really been our discussion. We're Mayo's and network. Have the P P O plan, be your high deductible plan, and then have your point of service plan with a lower deductible. And maybe that's where people don't have a contribution.
I almost wonder if you'd reverse that. Because if you, if you had a monthly contribution for the Cadillac plan, which would have more coverage as far as Mayo, for example, I would think that'd be the one you'd want people to contribute to with a lower deductible, rather than high deductible for a smaller network.
That would make sense.
You would, you would have your people that, I mean, every, everyone's got a mental picture in their head whether they expect to go to the doctor or not. So you'd have the people that don't expect to go to the doctor, would be on the cheaper plan with a higher deductible, which could be a hundred percent paid for by the county. Someone who wanted the better coverage with a low deductible and more location options in, in specific Mayo. Someone who expected to use it would pay a monthly amount out of their paycheck for that better coverage with a lower deductible, because they'd be contributing every month. That's, that's what I would kind of.
Sense. Oh, I guess my, who would decide what the premium would be between the two? You?
No, we do.
We would decide.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
Yep, that is not, that is not my decision. And that's really
Yeah.
what you decide on how you protect the fund, how you fund it.
So we would, we would set the contribution rates for each plan, and then we would set who contributes that amount out of the total. Like if we said, if, if the the far right column, we paid everything for family and single, and then you went to the third column where the employee contributed two hundred and fifty bucks a month, or whatever that dollar figure is, we would set both sides of that equation.
Well, with fuzzy math, it would come probably to the about the twenty and change or something like that.
Total still might.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't think it would for.
Which is coming to a hundred dollars a month.
You want to, I can tell you, you wanna set it so that you wanna entice people to stay or to go to the point of service plan.
Yep. And that'd be the one that you'd have. And that's where I think you'd want the low deductible on, I'll just say option three, the third one from the left, because that'd be the one you wouldn't have the H S A with. I mean, you could, they could still contribute on their own, but if we contributed to an H S A, that'd be the one you'd have a higher, you'd do that contribution for people that went to a high deductible plan, because they take on that, that risk.
I see a lot of places do it. I mean, well, I don't know if a lot, but I've seen, um, where a high deductible health plan, because you're taking on more liability as the member, you pay a lower premium. Even though that network's better, you're taking on four thousand dollars of that first dollar coverage. You as that employee don't have any coverage until you hit four thousand. I'm not saying there's a right or wrong way.
It would just be, you would, you would have to account for that at whatever you set the employee contribution, basically. Or you could, you could use that as a tool to balance that.
How, how much skin in the game do we as supervisors have to make sure that our employees don't get dragged with a great big insurance bill? What, what is our responsibility as supervisors? I think we have to ask that question to ourselves too.
Chris?
Kind of where I was gonna go is, I'm not, I guess one way or the other on stuff, but if there is gonna be two plans to choose from, um, is there some intention of education to make sure that people
Yeah.
don't pick the wrong plan and get stuck with something? Because as Michelle said, it's not our job to understand all this.
Yeah.
Looking at the numbers, yeah, it, it kinda makes sense as an overall, but somebody could really get in a bad place.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to go back to your employees and try and.
Plan, you know, okay, well, I want this one, because it costs me less, and then they didn't understand maybe the entirety of, well, it costs you less, but you don't get Mayo, and that's the thing that your pre-existing conditions or something may end towards needing in the future, and then all of a sudden, something happens and, oh, well, what am I supposed to do now? So that was my only thing. It's just education for the employees as, as a whole, this, you know.
You're exactly right. I mean, education is going to be important. When you make, especially a network change, even if it's just an offering, but like you said, you don't want someone just looking at the bottom line. The other thing that I think is going to be critical in educating the employees is any change you make to your deductible or out-of-pocket affected seven-one, changes their calendar year deductible. So right now, people have a five hundred dollar single deductible. I'm just gonna make round numbers for these. So the five hundred dollar deductible, if someone meets that in June, and so for the rest of June, they're not paying any claims. If you change that deductible to a thousand dollars, seven-one, now they go back to paying that next five hundred, because now instead of having a five hundred, they have a thousand. Education is going to be critical. People need to understand.
So that although the deductible is on a calendar year, if you make a change during that calendar year, the increase impacts that calendar year.
Yes.
But that also causes fight that adjusts numbers, and people know going forward that there's going to be more cost, and our fund take a bigger hit for the remainder of this year due to I, I guess I'm a little specific what something would be, but if somebody had something in the back of their mind that, oh, I should do this, and then all of a sudden, you find out that your deductible's gonna double or triple, they go and do that while the deductible's still low, so they only have to pay so much. And then the fund balance takes a hit, an additional hit over what's already projected.
You're saying like someone.
Those plan changes are gonna land seven-one.
You're saying like someone who has a, a bad knee, and, and they're gonna do it in, in April instead of waiting till August?
Something like that.
Okay.
You know, if, if, and I don't, I don't know what all we have going on. I guess technically, you guys don't need it, because it all comes up in, in COVID itself. But yeah, if there's a, a, a majority of the group, or a number of people that have things and they go through, how they give a hit, is that gonna be to the fund? If everybody pushes stuff to be on the low deductible? Is that?
Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but that wouldn't really have any impact on us, except for the actual claim dollars up to thirty-five right now, right? Because our stop loss and all that for the current plan year is already locked in. So it would just be from the bottom up to thirty-five that would be an impact, potentially?
No, because everything will change.
But that'd be aft, that'd be after seven-one. If someone does something in April, like this current plan year, it wouldn't have a substantial impact.
Your plan year. Your benefit year is one-one to twelve thirty-one.
Yep.
Yes, and your contract year is seven-one to six thirty.
Yep.
I don't know that we can predict, I don't know that we can look at that and say whether it would, because again, it's, it's just gonna be elective. And the other thing you're gonna run into is, if I go have a knee surgery in April, just to use your example, and I get my five hundred dollars, well, the deductible's gonna change in July.
Because you're not gonna be done with it.
Right, so I'm gonna still have to multiply that with five hundred dollars.
No, it's just a thought of
Yeah, no, agreed.
something to watch for, though, if, if that's a thing, if it may take a big hit.
Well, our stop gas gap would make more difference.
Stop loss would make a difference, and that's.
More of a difference on our fund balance than that one.
Yeah, and that's where I, I think the biggest thing would be the claims up to the stop loss. That would, that would be our only impact, I believe.
Yeah, like that'd be the only thing that would affect our.
The rest of it isn't.
Yeah, because our stop loss price is already locked in, the contract.
Because at the end of the day, the member liability right now is only five hundred dollars.
Right.
Yep.
I mean, even if you take it to, you know, and there's three or four people that do that, I, I don't think to the claims, it's going to make a big difference at all. I really don't. I don't have a way to predict that. I think it's a very good thought.
So an example that in my head is, you know, so if you got gas stations across town, and one raises the price, and people find out, and people all hit the other gas station where the gas gets changed, type of deal. You just get that rush on, on savings. And I did, I don't know how it would affect it, which is something that possibly could.
I don't, you know, think at the end of the day, you'd see a significant impact at all.
Okay.
I have no way.
No way to justify it, because again, I don't, I don't know if there are five, ten day knee surgeries, or, you know, elective surgeries out there.
Typically, you don't run into a lot of people needing, you know, for those things, especially when you have a five hundred dollar deductible.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't imagine we have a huge backlog of all those sort of things.
Right.
Kyle, are you still under the impression that we shouldn't change our stop loss, because from what I see here, I think you should.
Looking, looking at these numbers, I think the, the third and last column are two that would entice me. And if we could, if we could offer both of them, I think that would make a lot of sense.
Yeah, but, but I think we're gonna have to increase the stop loss.
Yeah.
Because it makes more sense not to.
So if, if we pair two plans together, would that third and seventh option be ones that you could pair together as offerings to employees?
Oh, absolutely.
Because they'd have the same stop loss.
What if the deductible higher in the third plan?
The deduct, yeah, um, which.
You can't say it's the same for the.
No, that's true.
That's a big change in deductible for employees.
How about the second and the seventh, and then if we had an employee contribution to the second one, you'd have that be as a monthly, but you'd have low deductible yet?
You're talking about the second plan and then the last plan?
Second and last, yeah.
But either one of them would be, would qualify for health, uh, H S A.
Neither one of them are high deductible health plans. Because I didn't put any high deductible.
But could we convert the last one to a high deductible with everything else being the same?
It's not high deductible though, because you got.
He says.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I'm saying if, if we change that.
Yeah, you're just not getting to have any first dollar coverage, like you said, so it's going to change.
But then we, but then that's where you could incorporate the HSA, right?
And, and employer contribution to it.
Yeah.
Because look, that's where you're gonna hit the biggest savings, right? So you want to, you wanna.
You would.
Offer, offer that contribution by the employer into that because it's, by just choosing that, the employee is saving the county money.
Correct, yep.
With your, your side of, how much? That's a mechanical thing. You gotta figure out, you have the numbers.
I mean, I guess just looking at the numbers here, if, if you looked at the family side of things. You would have two thousand dollar deductible on the second plan. And you'd have a five thousand dollar deductible in-network on family plan. So if you offered those two with a three thousand dollar. HSA contribution from the employee to singles and families, everyone would be treated the same, at least that way. And you could spend the money on health, health costs. Um, but then you would pick up that, that difference down to. The three point two expected costs per employee that chose that, so to speak, as an option. And that would, that would keep it same dollar wise. For actual out of pocket for the employee.
Well, then you'd have to allocate the cost to the county for that contribution, right?
True. You would, you would still be dollars ahead though.
Same place contribution would make a difference on the fund balance again.
That would make a difference on the second, second plan, yep. You would have that or, cause like. Right now, we've got a hundred family plans. I just, I knew that number's an easy one, so if you had a hundred. And everyone went to the last one, which you wouldn't have, but if you had everyone go to that and they had. A three thousand, a year HSA. Contribution from the employer, you would add three hundred thousand, so you would bring it to three point five million instead of four point. Almost four point five million, so that'd be almost a million dollar savings even with that contribution. And then if you add. An employee contribution out of their paycheck for the second option, you would make up that. If, if you could set the dollars close enough or whatever, you could make up that, that difference.
But any, but Indiana kind of say that the employees out there are going to make up the difference because they're gonna pay out of pocket costs.
Hmm, a s- a portion of it, but.
Quite a bit of it.
But if you, if you did that, you would have five thousand dollar deductible for family. On the last one, two thousand on the second one, so both of them would go to a two thousand dollar. Um, out of pocket, which is the exact same as our current.
We're at five hundred and a thousand.
Oh, yeah, on here, it's, on here's list is a thousand two, but yeah, so you, you would go from a thou- five hundred and a thousand. To a thousand and two thousand, but.
So I'm page five on last year's claims and so there's a lot of people are gonna be paying out of their pockets.
But you'd only have a two thousand dollar out of pocket if you count the HSA.
But I'm just saying, there's a lot of people gonna be paying health costs out of their pocket if we do that. And they have to realize that.
And you're gonna charge them a premium to do so.
Yes. That's my point, Phil. Thank you.
Keep in mind. Last year, seventy one point eight percent of the members had no claims or claims paid less than twenty five hundred dollars.
But that's the reason we have insurance is to spread the cost over more people.
Right, but I'm just saying, you know, who it's going to affect. You're not going to see a lot of people hit. If you raise your deductible to a thousand dollars still, if they only had, you know.
It would, it would be a really small increase.
Yes.
If, if you wanted, if you wanted the second plan.
To go to a thousand dollars, you know, if you wanted to take the second plan. As far as deductibles to match the plan on the very right.
Yep.
What would be the object of giving them a choice and wouldn't that just be the plan then?
If you, if you give them the two plans as options, it gives the employee flexibility, um.
Which two options now?
This, I would say the second and the seventh, so the second and the last one. Because then you, like, when we talked about Mayo being in-network, the ones who wanted Mayo would choose the second one. And that could be the one you have. X amount of dollars out of your monthly paycheck, but they would, they would figure that as their. Healthcare contribution in some form. Um, where the others would take that higher, higher dollar deductible. And if they have an HSA tied with it, you might have someone like Luke that. Stacks up an HSA over X number of years of employment and they never use it or use very little out of it. And then all of a sudden they get to retirement and they, like, your, your plan was to get to retirement, use it then. And you're seventy two percent of people that don't use it or use very little of it would actually have more of a benefit. Right?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, if, you know, if you have people that don't use it, and even if they do use it, it doesn't hurt anything. I mean, it's not costing them any money to use it. So are you thinking that, that last plan, you wanna look at that as a high deductible health plan?
I would, I would think so, because then that would give people the HSA option, right? Or the ability to use it.
Yep.
Does it move the needle a whole lot on that?
Moves it a million dollars.
Yeah.
And even, even if you factored in a contribution to an HSA, you'd still move it almost a million dollars if everyone moved over.
If the people, yeah, if they.
And if they.
Charge you a, an amount that would make it attractive.
If, and if they didn't move over to that, then you do a, a contribution out of their paycheck for the second option. And they would have the, they would have the choice of which they prefer. Would that be? Reasonable for, I mean, you give, give a lot of options to employees that way at least.
When you say you pay out of pocket for the monthly one, if they stay with column two.
Yep.
How much are you thinking? What amount are you thinking out of pocket? Because for those of us that would stay on that plan because Mayo's in that pocket, we already have large health bills. We're already paying quite a bit because we have health issues. So what are you thinking we would have to pay?
Four hundred dollars a month?
Four hundred dollars a month?
Just say it's five hundred thousand on a hundred plans.
Yep.
Simple math.
So our deductible would also go up five hundred dollars and we're paying four hundred dollars a month out of our pocket.
So if that's the case, we're better off going to find our own insurance to pay that four hundred dollars a month. I mean, that's the whole benefit of working for the county is to have. For its benefits.
Well, you find the insurance anywhere for that.
Yeah.
My, my, my question is, I mean, I, I. I was going down a different path with mine and obviously it's not my call, but you know, you have, you have the current plans. That people are on and familiar with. I mean, when I was quote unquote Catholic, I mean, that's kind of what I was saying.
Yep.
Pay for that so that you have no change. But then offer those of us who are looking at not banking, then we're not, and we don't know.
Yeah.
That's why we have insurance.
Yeah, you never, yeah.
You know, with the health, I mean, the health savings account that Luke was saying. Um, you know, with that attractiveness down the end, we're paying, say, three thousand dollars a year annually into it. And you can take that with you down the road when you retire if you, if it's still there. And I was looking at that, I mean, to change both of them, I think would be. You know, for those who are, even if it's twenty five percent, it's still twenty, that's, that's twenty five employees that would be impacted greatly.
Yeah.
Um, you know, but I think you have to, to be mindful of the fact that. There are a lot of employees that even a four hundred dollar a month. Bang on her, on their paycheck is going to be quite devastating.
Yes.
I.
Um, that's the, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, if you're looking at changing that plan where the deductible's gonna increase, then you know, how can you justify four hundred dollars? I mean, I understand that's how the dollars come out, but two hundred dollars, because they're gonna be impacted on the other side to paying at the doctor. To, to pay for their, their visit, you know, so I think you have to. Not at the spur of the moment, you guys have to reflect on this to see what you wanna do.
Yeah.
Because I'm fairly confident if you offer that health savings account, that's where I'm going, but that's just me individually. You got a hundred other, well, ninety nine other people that have to be, they have to be in consideration and I think those that are in that twenty five. That have, you know, have to use or rely upon that and have been faithful employees for however long they've been here, regardless of who they are, no one knows. But they need to be taken into consideration because, you know, you start making that type of change, you're impacted a lot. Not just health insurance and not just savings with the county, but you know, employees who are providing faithful service for you. So I guess that's where I was. I mean, I was saying Catholic, I think ours right now is pretty damn good.
Yep.
But you know, if you're gonna offer this other, I think it'll be attractive for, I'll just use me, me, okay? But, um, cause thank you for bringing that up, because it's something really good as far as a possibility.
Well, and I'll, I mean, the board all got the text, but I'll share with you guys who get a text here this last week from Brian Goodman. Who had watched the video and had listened to the conversation and, and used the outgoing schools as a comparison. For, um, employees there, they can get family plan coverage, the school contributes an amount. I think ballpark four hundred some bucks and the employees contribute five to six hundred. So you have that option and I don't. There's, there's also a point of not jumping off a cliff and making it hard for everyone to handle, I guess. Obviously, we're just getting numbers here right now, so I think Todd's point of actually looking at them, reflecting on them is, is a good. Good process or good, good thought and avenue to go down, I guess. My initial thought would be. More in the two, two fifty range, um, at least for year one. We could maybe address that more next year. Um, but I, I don't know if. We, we'd have multiple changes in here at the same time and hitting employees all at once with. Big changes everywhere is probably not the best option, but mellowing out the hills and valleys and. And making it manageable for employees, I think would be appreciated by all, so.
Because what you're, what you're looking at right now in columns two. Is the same plan you have today.
Just with.
Just with a seventy five thousand dollar stop loss.
Yep.
I mean, there aren't any changes to that.
Deductible, deductible is doubled.
No.
No.
It's, it's listed as a thousand and two thousand, but we're at five hundred.
No, that's the out of pocket deductible is actually listed five hundred and a thousand.
Is that higher?
So it's just the higher.
Okay, so yeah, that would.
That's only, yeah, that's the same plan as you have today, only the higher.
Yeah, I was, I was looking at a different column.
So just as increase in that saves money?
Yep. Yep.
Eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yep.
So you could offer.
Say the increase of different, well, that would save you even more. If you double the deductible, like Kyle said, to a thousand, two thousand, it'd save you even more. So it won't be that bigger contribution either, or zero contribution if there's a deductible.
Would, and that's what I was kind of thinking is, plan three, if we could get plan three. To match the deductibles and out of pocket max of plan seven, where is the one thousand twenty five hundred?
What would that say?
That, what would that look like?
Yeah, that's, oh, yeah.
Just matching the numbers for the deductible and the out of pocket max, but increasing. To the seventy five thousand stop loss with the prudent.
And, yep, and prudent, yep.
Yep.
Yeah, that is.
Then if you save your money and.
You'd be saving even more.
Wouldn't have to pull any money off, potentially off of a paycheck.
Right.
Because they'd be paying that at the doctor's office or whatever.
Right, well, you would, you probably wouldn't need as much. You would still need something to s- to. Incentivize the switch to the higher deductible plan, so you'd, you'd have to.
We're talking about just one plan, we're not, we're not talking about offering two plans.
Your incentive for the high deductible would be the amount.
The HSA.
You guys are putting into their HSA carry forward, that would be the.
What's even if there are two, and I mean, that might be more attractive for many.
Yeah.
You got what you're talking about is have one plan.
I'm talking just one plan.
If I don't need my deductible, I have money to all savers then, you know, I'm like you.
He's talking about one plan with a thousand and two thousand and changing the stop loss to seventy five, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, and more than likely that's your profit, my guess is lower than.
What's on the sheet.
What's on the sheet for, was that number two, two?
Why would you only want to offer one plan?
Yeah.
The two plan option would give employees flexibility.
Right, then we've got to, we've got to figure in what we're wanting to contribute for HSA.
Still save a lot of money.
A four tier plan versus a two tier plan should save some money.
Four.
A lot of money would save.
Yeah, it's just how the rates are distributed will be different.
So I mean, that's, that's, that, that's obviously attractive too, um. I, I think the employees would rather have nothing taken out of their paychecks.
Yep.
Oh, I don't disagree with you there. I don't disagree with you there.
Correctly if I'm wrong, anybody can go out and get an HSA, uh, a bank account, right? Set up your own HSA.
You can.
But it would be a contribution.
No, I know, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, for the benefit of, of having an HSA, you know.
But that's employee contributed versus.
And that, and that would be up to their, their choice, that's what I'm saying, is, is if they like the idea of an HSA, they can open an HSA on that.
Dog.
Um, I just wanna ask one question. At the beginning of all this discussion, the. What is in column, if you number the columns one through seven from left to right. The column with the pound sign symbols where it says see notes below. Did you say that that was supposed to be a thirty five thousand dollar?
Yes.
Stop loss, because it does have, I believe it says fifty thousand dollar stop loss.
Yeah, that's.
Yes, it's supposed to be thirty five.
Cause it says, it says fifty thousand here, so that is a thirty five thousand there.
It is a thirty five thousand. The underwriter didn't quote the fifty, they quoted a thirty five and I.
So we have two thirty five thousand dollars, the asterix is thirty five thousand dollars and the pounds are thirty five thousand?
Which different deductibles?
Yeah, they are different deductibles.
I just wanna make sure.
Yep.
It's just a twenty thousand and.
Five hundred and.
Twenty five hundred.
The pound signs are thirty five thousand.
Rates for that one?
And that's thirty five. And this one is seventy five. The very last one with the dollar signs.
Yes.
Is seventy five individual stop loss.
Okay.
The other two, so five and six are thirty five thousand. Thank you.
Is it possible, I know we're on the fiscal year, but is it possible to have a change effective general referrals?
No.
You would have to change contracts.
Single plan, just nothing that would be. Because it's going to save you plenty of money that you're about to fund balance.
Which column are you looking at?
So, no, number three, the third column, but mimicking the deductible and out-of-pocket max of the seventh column, just basically marrying the two plans together.
Well, that's not going to be the same dollar though. It's, 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 they're, they're completely different plans, they're not going to be this.
Right, right. I know, I'm, I'm saying with the thousand dollar deductible, for the single.
There are a lot of number there, we're just saying it's going to make a big difference on the.
Yeah. But I, I don't know that you can even compare them.
We're not comparing.
Wait for the numbers.
You gotta, you gotta request a rate and see what it is and compare it.
Yep.
And is that a possibility, taking into consideration the savings, that maybe the HSA is also, since the deductible is going up, a possibility, maybe not to the tune of three thousand a year, but maybe having it available for a smaller contribution.
Five hundred a year.
Yeah.
First, if we get that number, then we can go to the HSA.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, because that also helps all of them.
What would, what would a downside to offering two plans be? Is, is there any negative impact to that, Michelle?
Yeah, the negative impact I have is, I'm scared that an employee is going to go through a very high deductible and then come back to the county and say, why didn't you entice me to do that? I'm, I'm upset because now I have a ten thousand dollar bill that I can't pay.
That's.
And, and a employee may be going, I'm living paycheck, paycheck, I can't afford that, so I'm after this plan instead of that plan. They may not be all making the same amount of dollars, so I don't think it's right if that, if a employee chooses this instead of that, that's my thoughts behind it.
There really, there really isn't a downfall to having more options for employees, because I think, you know, we have different, you know, we have people living paycheck to paycheck, we have people that are saying, you know, I think an HSA would be great, you know, to have that opportunity. So I think you have, you know, you have different minds and different people in different situations where they can make that choice. So is there a downfall? You can come up with a downfall for anything, you can come up with positives for anything, it's all in how you look at it, but I think you need to make sure that you have an incentive and you explain to people why it's there. And if you keep a plan you have today and maybe change the deductibles like you're talking about to a thousand from five hundred dollars, explain to people, if you stay in this plan, these are your only changes. And it's going to cost you, I don't know, two hundred dollars a month or whatever you guys are talking about. If you go to this plan, it's free, will make a small contribution, you know, to the HSA plan, if that's what you decide to do, and you, Mr. Employee, you can do the same thing, and here's what an HSA does. I think it's, it's education, 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 no matter what you do. You know, I, especially if you're offering two plans, you want to make sure people understand what they're doing. I mean, you can also offer a high deductible health plan, that's the same network. You know, it can be the PPO network like you have today, so that you don't, nobody has to worry about going to Mayo, but they need to understand, if you have that high deductible health plan, you have to come up with that first three thousand dollars or four thousand dollars, whatever it is.
I don't have a problem with that, but I have, my issue with high deductible plan is, in order to entice people to take the high deductible plan, you have to make them pay out-of-pocket for insurance. That isn't the high deductible plan, so how do we administer all that? I think it's fairer to every individual in the county, because I call insurance insurance, that we share the cost of some of the healthcare with each other. Am I missing something?
Well, I mean, even, even to Phil's point, I mean, the, the HSA would be an incentive for those that don't anticipate using it, like Todd or.
But if you're, if you're, if you're looking at Joshua's point, if you have one, but you still do the HSA, but, you know, let the numbers come back, we're just talking here, but still offer it, but add a smaller contribution, then, you know, it's, it's, it's the same thing. Whereas if you do the high deductible amount, the county's putting more towards the contribution. You know, I, I think it's six and one half does the other to a certain extent, it's not equal, but the reality is that you can always contribute additional amounts on your own.
Uh, is there, so there were HSA accounts set up, who administers that? Is that you guys, or would we have to have a third party administer the HSA accounts?
A third party would administer the HSA accounts?
Yeah.
If you want to make a contribution, if the county wants to make a contribution, if the county doesn't want to make a contribution, then people can set up their own.
Right.
Yeah, I was going to say, we already have.
But to have, like, an HRA, which is really what we're looking at for a high deductible health plan, you have to have the high deductible health plan. You can have your HSA, your, your flex plan where you could offer dependent care and medical, that's.
You already have that.
Yeah.
You already have that, okay.
So that.
Those have to be.
Yeah, those have, exactly.
You can carry over, it's like six hundred and fifty dollars on your HSA portion, and the dependent care, you can only do up to five thousand max, I think, for the year. So depending, I mean, depending on where you're at for, for childcare, which is usually worth more. You can use it all or anything.
We got everybody thoroughly confused?
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, that's, there are a lot of options, I mean, you just.
Phil.
I got one question, you're, uh, as Josh said, you was looking at, at line number three, you're changing that deductible. Why would we not compare that to line two, comparing grandfather versus non-grandfather? Because besides that, you're changing the prescription on that line three as well. Is that correct? It says up top there, proven R X, whatever that is?
Yeah, that's a program.
Yeah. It's.
Is available through Wellmark first this year.
Is there a cost difference, the same deductible, same plans between the grandfathered and the non-grandfathered plans?
For prescription?
No, just the plan in general, health plan.
So the problem is, is if you go from, if you increase the deductible, that changes it from a grandfathered plan to a non-grandfathered plan.
You can't change the deductible.
The plan cannot change more than five percent from the time you begin your grandfathering status to maintain grandfathered status. So it's very, I mean, we have very, very huge plans, in my entire book of business, I have three grandfathered plans.
I can remember was it a guy like.
Yeah, I mean, it's very difficult to maintain grandfathered status, just with everything changing with healthcare, it's very hard to maintain.
Thanks.
Yeah, prudent is just a savings mechanism, um, for certain type of.
So, if we go to a higher out-of-pocket maximum, is it thirty families that we're impacting?
Oh.
Thirty, it was, it was seven, what was it?
Based on last year's.
Seventy-one percent that did not use.
So we have thirty families that it would cost them out of their pocket another eight thousand dollars to get a health card.
I don't know that it's thirty families, it would be thirty percent.
Of three hundred.
And there's a hundred and thirty-one contracts.
So, so it was.
Forty families.
Forty-five, some of those.
So roughly, so, so just say thirty, so you have thirty families, that it would cost them another eight thousand dollars for the year. Is that right? Because you're talking about an out-of-pocket maximum of two thousand, going to ten thousand?
No, no, we're, we're kind of, so I'm saying that that plan, but with the deductibles and out-of-pocket max that matches the seventh plan.
Okay, so you go from two thousand dollar out-of-pocket maximum to five thousand, so those thirty families
Right.
would have an extra three thousand dollars out of their pocket.
Not necessarily, because each person would be limited to, um, the one thousand, what did, what deductible are you talking about going to, one thousand?
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure I gave it to you correctly.
Yeah, I guess what I'm getting at is, we need to keep in mind that there are thirty families or thirty people on our plan that will be impacted by a pay cut because of the changes that we're making today, so. I know it doesn't affect most families, but there are families that it will have an impact on.
You'd have to have multiple people in that family have claims of over a thousand dollars.
Yes, that's what I was.
Okay, I, it's true, true enough.
Yep, so that's what I was saying.
So what, is it twenty-five, well, whatever it is.
So once one person in that family hits a thousand?
Yep.
They have coverage, or they, you know, their deductibles and that.
And we're talking over the two to two thousand, right?
So, one person doesn't.
Two thousand per person, five thousand.
We're talking, no, that's the out-of-pocket max, so once one person in the family hits two thousand out-of-pocket max, their coverage is a hundred percent, they don't have to hit the entire out-of-pocket max of five thousand, one person in the family.
I guess you guys are getting my point, that we're going to have thirty families that are going to be impacted some percent, and maybe it's forty next year, or forty-five, we don't know.
We don't know, yeah.
But there will be pay cuts for those, those, or I guess maybe not pay cuts, but.
Out-of-pocket.
Correct.
However, that's it, if they use it, if they don't, then it's not necessary.
Well, I don't know historically, if it's been thirty or thirty-five, I'll.
Who knows what the next year is going to be.
Well, there's, there's also not very many that pay a hundred percent of family plans, so there's, there's other cost-sharing alternatives that other employers have chosen as options. Are you looking at something there, Michelle?
I'm just thinking, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I had it.
I, I want to address that concern, um, because I, I get it, it's a valid concern, so I'm just looking at some numbers here, and I can't disclose due to HIPAA reasons, some exact information, but what I can tell you is about two percent of your population accounted for forty-seven percent of your claims. So I think just looking at that.
So if we increase the stop loss, I mean, the money's come from somewhere, right? So it's either come from our fund or it's come from Wellmark, so maybe it's not as much impact to some of the families, maybe not those thirty.
That's, that's what I'm trying to get.
And is that a story?
Two percent, three hundred and thirty-some members.
Yeah, so just, I, I'm trying, if you can't disclose this lot.
They had forty, forty, almost half of the cost.
Yeah.
Of, for.
Yes.
That had to be paid.
Yeah, so that's what I'm trying to, I mean, help you understand that without disclosing what I can't.
But you never know with kids, and he break his arm, he had that one for surgery like that, you never know about that.
You know, this is, we're talking, we're talking about terminal illness, um.
Catastrophic.
Yeah.
Life, we're talking about life, not.
Catastrophic.
Broken, broken bone is not what we're talking about.
No, that won't even make your thirty-five thousand.
But we're, we're talking about.
Talking about.
Life altering.
Major health, yes, life altering situations, yeah. And those we can't predict either, we can't predict any of this, and it, I don't know, I don't know the answer. I will just give you all the information that I can to help you make your decisions and tell you what I see from my other book of business. I help a lot of counties, a lot of cities, so that means it's a really, um, area. So I can just, I can just tell you what I see out there, you know, you have experience from the school district, um.
Even if we change the insurance to what Josh was talking about, we still have really good insurance.
I, can I get on this clip?
Oh, maybe it's excellent.
I, I mean, seriously, it is, it is amazing.
Want to drive, why, the secondary roads?
Yeah, maybe we got a position helping for.
We've been looking, we've been looking for a mechanic for a while.
Oh, I don't think I'm a very good mechanic.
Aw, darn.
I, I'm not very good at that, but I think I could drive a road.
So in rural counties like us, or another state, and, and, or different hospital networks that surround us, if we did look at a high deductible plan, would we be best to stay with PPO versus the point of sale, just if we're relocated?
Yeah, I would, I would, I'm going to go to a high deductible plan.
Well, we got to.
If, if we had two plans, it would make.
We got to look at your report to see what.
Yeah, let's look at the disruption, let's see how many people that would actually affect.
And then look at the numbers of the plan that I was saying and kind of see where we end up.
Right, because that, you know, going to the point of service plan saves additional dollars. And if it doesn't have a huge impact, and there would be enough of your population that would be, have a reason to go there, save money, be able to participate in a high deductible health plan and an HRA, that might be, you know, the reason to do it, so yeah, it really depends on what those numbers are.
Right.
I just didn't have enough time.
No.
To get that pulled together.
I appreciate the numbers you did get though, now there's a couple others in here, there's this second one. About the same as first, maybe I have two copies in here.
It's about the same.
No, they're exactly the same.
You have two copies.
Okay, okay.
Looks like you have two.
It's enough to confuse everybody, so.
That was my job today.
Yeah.
Did I do well?
Yes.
I was going to give you this?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, then I've been successful today if I caused confusion.
No.
Okay, so just so I know what to come back with, okay? We're looking at the disruption report right now, we're working on the four-tier rates.
Yep.
In addition to that, we want to take Plan Three, match the deductibles from Plan Seven, and then you want to see Plan Seven as a high deductible health plan, is that correct?
Yes.
But have the PPO network.
The four-tier, what is, what is that, is that PPO or?
That can be, that's the single employee spouse, um, we're just looking at that.
She already explained that.
We're just looking at that instead of the two-tier for single and family, with the rate structure.
But are we, I guess I didn't know we were taking that, is that which number?
It can, I can look at four-tier for any plans you want, or if you just want to, let's not make too many changes, let's stay with two-tier, if we're going to offer two plans, let's not completely.
Almost anywhere you're at to do this stage one next year, if you want to in the next fiscal year, a different change, do a different change so that we don't confuse.
I, I don't know that you want to completely upset the apple cart, too many things.
Right, let's, let's do things.
Because you're going to have a lot to communicate if you offer two plans, but that's up to you guys, I mean.
We want, we want to involve, not throw it away.
Yes, I mean, I can do whatever, I can quote whatever.
Michelle, how long does it take you to get ghost numbers, usually?
It usually takes a week to ten days, it takes a while.
But we're, we're probably not going to change the budget much from what we decided on, we're going to raise healthcare, we can always take some out of the budget, we can't add to it.
Yeah, we can always come down.
As long as that balance in there stays in the county, we did not hurt anyone.
Yeah.
So let's not wreck the plan, let's keep the very fiscal responsible.
But it, it still gives us, yeah, it still gives us options, um, to consider, but as far as budgeting, we have a max number.
Right.
So.
Is that good with you, Tammy?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, do we need any other rates for any other plans? No?
What about high deductible plans for the in-network as well? What about high deductible plans for the in-network as well, the PPO one, well, cause that was one of the.
I think she listed that as an option that she.
Right, so number seven, I'm going to quote as a high deductible health plan.
But you're.
PPO network. Correct.
Can we, can we have comparisons of that, of the PPO network versus the other network, with everything else the same? Just to see, just to see the network difference with everything else being the same, the network difference.
Might change everything, keep it a little more consistent for the members for a year.
To educate employees will be.
Right.
It will be, like you said.
We can evolve further the next year.
Yeah, and I'm not saying we'd have to choose that, but I think just the, even background knowledge, it'd be beneficial, just even, even for next year's discussion sake of, oh, last year it looked like this was a possibility, this year it looks like this is a possibility. Even, even just for background knowledge, even if we don't go that direction, I think it'd be.
I can tell you it's typically four or five percent, just with the words.
Okay, okay. Well, I guess that's.
So once we get that quote back, you can just take four or five percent off of it.
Okay, that's fine, I suppose.
I mean, I can quote it, but I'm just, for, if you're just using it to compare, I'd rather not take more time to get another quote like this.
Yeah.
Yep.
Let's, let's just get something.
Stick with the list we got.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll get those two quotes, getting the disruption report.
What is it, so I just, you gotta have a budget hearing on Tuesday before any of this comes, so. Yeah, do I just leave the twenty-two sixty-five that was there before, or?
We're not, we are not even talking about that, Chris.
So what?
This is all expenses.
I'm, well, I understand that, but.
But we're not talking about that.
No, what, I'll go back to what Roger said, we, we're talking as the dollars in the budget as a maximum. So figure what we talked about for a twenty percent increase.
Okay.
As your budget figures, if we do anything lower than that, we're still covered.
Okay, that's, I just.
Yes.
Trying to get stuff out for next week's budget thing today, and it, a lot kind of hinges on what happens, but.
That's what, that's what you should plug in.
Come, I have no clue where to be with anything.
Yep, so plan on the twenty percent for now, and then if we change it.
Yep, I'll leave it with what's in there, and we'll go with that.
Yep.
Okay.
Don't try to pour late premiums to fund balance, you'll confuse you.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Any other final questions here?
So what did we decide on the employee contribution?
We didn't make a decision. We just.
Phil, I have a real hard time. You just hired some people with no, with a promise of no contribution.
No premium.
No premium in either their wages, I, this year I have a hard time taking and changing anything.
I changed the deductible, I would like to see that the same, or I'm gonna do some, some salary changes.
Yeah. Cause it's probably not fair to your new employees and our old employees to say, we're gonna start taking something out of your paycheck without substantial notice ahead of time.
I just, I'll, I'll have quite a few people retire, have you start taking contributions, I'm just gonna, that's kind of a perk, so.
How do they increase the deductible, what we need to say?
But you see, that's, yeah, I mean, but if there's a health savings account where the county's contributing, they're not increasing the deductible. That's my point, in that way, health savings, yeah. So I mean, it's all speculation at this point in time until we figure out the numbers, but, um, you know, so I, I think, yeah, we, we really can't do anything until we hear back.
Yep.
E, you guys really can't do anything until we hear back, sorry.
We like input though.
Yeah.
And I will get your numbers as quickly as possible.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Sounds good.
The underwriters just don't really love when I go send it to their desk.
Then do that some more, and they'll tell them, they'll get it done faster.
Bring him a cup of coffee, that might help with it.
I'm not a good writer, I'm.
You're gonna come back after lunch to do budget stuff?
Yeah, probably need to. All right, well.
Thanks, hold it.
Thanks.
Yes, I'll come back at one thirty, it's toward twelve.